Okay, we're all set up. Okay, we're convening the Tuesday, February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, meeting, four o'clock meeting at the Timbuktu Community Center in Timbuktu, New Mexico. First order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Need approval of today's agenda. Role call. Terry Borzoni, Mark Harding, Dave Truie, Ed Harstey are physically present, and Paul Hagman is on the phone. Approval of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the agenda is written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. We have manager's report?
In the past two weeks, the crew has fixed five line leaks. We repaired two line leaks or isolated. It's not affecting any customers at the time. Guy's been kind of busy past week with getting skate updates done and everything like that. So I really haven't had a chance to get out and fix those two other leaks. Repair two meter box leaks. The crew did one new meter install. We have two new meter installs pending that just came in the last couple of days. The water service line to the lodge has been nearly complete. It's functioning. It still needs to do a little bit of landscaping to get finished there. Still got to put in a yard hydrant for the bulk water meter. Waiting on that to get delivered. And it's, it's actually gonna be a since it was a building maintenance because a line was between the meter and the building. That's a building maintenance repair job, so we're gonna have to charge that to F and S expense. Well, too, is operational. It's providing water to people at Timbuktu, and skater modifications have been done. Having some issues with getting the guys. Two of the water operators are having issues with their devices getting signed in too, so they have remote access, but we're working on that. Hopefully we'll get it. We'll get it done today. And then the last thing I have is the two thousand and twenty four New Mexico Legislature has approved a capital outlay for TWSD in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to replace tank number three. And that's if the governor doesn't veto it. And should know for sure on that by the sixth of March.
And which is tank number three?
That's one that's way on the top.
In the north. By the McIlroy, McIlroy Station. Yep, top of the area.
Yeah, very top of the area. That's all I got.
Okay. Do we have a treasurer?
Thank you, Mark.
Is there any questions? On the manager's report? If not, we have a treasurer's report? No, we do not have a treasurer's report.
I can read the balances.
That would be great.
Okay, today as two twenty seven twenty four. Our standby account is one hundred thousand, one oh six, twenty six dollars and forty six cents. Our money market account, that's a loan reserve, is one hundred sixty six thousand, eight hundred eighty seven dollars, seventy three cents. Another money account that we have that is for a loan, seven thousand, nine hundred twenty four dollars and eighty cents. Our operational account today, forty nine thousand, eight hundred fifty six dollars and thirty five cents. And our another account for a loan, USD eight hundred seventy dollars and two cents. Our savings account is still at eighty five thousand, nine hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty nine cents. And today we have fifty eight thousand, eight hundred eighty eight dollars, ninety four cents in our F and S account.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to old business, discuss approve. Any changes to the regular meeting minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four? If there is none, motion.
Moving to the further meeting minutes of February thirtieth.
Do you have a motion? We need a second. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Those against? Motion carries. Minutes approved. New business nominate and appoint the treasurer of the board of directors. And I would like do we lose you, Paul? Paul?
Yes, I got you.
Okay, thank you. Nomination and appoint a treasurer for board of directors. I would like to take this opportunity to nominate Ed Harstey for the position of treasurer. Anybody else?
Do that, Ed. Give a shout.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a nomination. We have a second. All those. Okay, thank you, Paul. All those in favor of Ed being our treasurer? Aye.
Aye.
All those. Aye. All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Harstey with the new treasurer. Thank you. Thank you. Cost of service, moving on, cost of service study, status update, and approval of additional funding to new gen strategies and solutions for consulting services to the completion of the district's PRC rate filing. Mr. Mark, can you bring us up to date on this?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll kind of go over this. Basically for the audience that gave me all a handout, I pretty much told you. And this is from the head guy there, Chris Eckert, Eckery. Where we're at right now with the cost of service study is the study's been done. Their conclusions have been filed with the PRC. Our advice notice to the PRC has been filed for the interim rates to become permanent rates. And the new gen, the cost of service study people are recommending an actual an additional twelve percent increase on top of the the interim rate that we're working under right now. So by the time everything's settled down, it'd be a forty two percent increase in what the rates were a year ago. The PRC, the PRC staff has till the fifteenth of March to review the cost of service study and the advice notice filing that the attorney did with them. Then that honor before the fifteenth, the PRC will reply back to what was filed, and they'll either approve it or disapprove it. If they approve it, well, then that's I don't know where exactly it would go from there, but I know if they they don't exactly approve it, it's, it, they basically say, okay, we've received it, we've gone over it, we've reviewed it. And then, once that's done, we'll have to send out a notice to all of our customers before the thirtieth of March. And then they have a sixty day period to comment on that notice or file complaints or whatever they want to do with the PRC. And then sometime in May, there'll be hearing scheduled, just like it was last year with the commission. And at that time, the new gen, cost of service people will be providing their testimony to support the rate increase. Also, our engineer, Matt Thompson, he'll be doing some testimony, and I'm sure I'll be doing some testimony also. And don't have an exact date yet. It's still a little ways down the road as far as when those hearings would be in May, but I'm thinking that they'll be pretty pretty early in May. Because this has been already going on for a year. So that's pretty much where we're at on that. The next step, what New Gen is gonna be doing for us is they're actually gonna be filing our annual report to the PRC this year to make sure that it corresponds with the cost of service study. Because there's a lot of financials that go into that cost of service study. They're also gonna be setting up a financial plan for the district moving forward with their recommendations for how to operate, how our operations and also you know, setting aside funds for grant matches or paying off loans or whatnot. That's basically where we're at right now. You know, it was, it was pretty detailed study that they did. I mean, they did a whole lot of financials on it. Basically, well, actually, they did a more in-depth audit than auditors do every year. I have that update here. If anybody wants one, get ahold of me and I'll email it to you. But that's pretty much where we're at right now.
And it looks like we're over six thousand dollars over budget with New Gen right now?
Uh, well, it's it's more than that, and it's gonna go, it's gonna go higher too by the time they get done doing their
We had budgeted thirty five thousand and
Yeah.
Currently saying we're up to forty one thousand.
Yeah. Yep. So, and these what we're paying to, to New Gen I forget exactly what they call it, but it'll be like a supplemental to our billing for, I believe, like the next two years if the PRC approves it. So actually, our customers are the ones that are paying for this study. So we're just gonna raise everybody's rates a few dollars a month for the next couple of years.
Is there any questions? Okay. And then we'll move on to discuss operation of the swimming pool. Do we want to approve additional funding? Do we need to do that? Have they been paying? What is the process? Are they being paid?
Yeah.
Did they bill us? Did they bill us for the forty one thousand or forty two?
I don't know the exact amount of what they've billed us. Fifty six something.
Fifty six. So it's actually
You gave me a quote from, from one guy who's just fixed the pool. No, 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 we're not.
No, we're talking about the new gen.
Oh, sorry. They've been billing us on a monthly basis so far.
So we really don't have a good tally with exactly where we're at with them.
Yeah, I should have brought that. I know the current invoice I have from them.
And have we paid them up to date? Yes, thus far.
Yeah.
So we're only behind one monthly billing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're not behind that.
No, yeah.
Okay, so, and at this point, to be honest with you, it's really it's hard to say exactly what it's gonna end up being at the end. Because of not knowing how much more work the PRC is gonna require.
It's kind of hard to do an approval and additional funding if you don't have kind of, yeah, kind of an estimate of what that's gonna be.
Yeah. So, I mean, you can just keep paying them like gas. I mean, we really have no choice. Unfortunately.
Anyone else have any suggestion?
Do regular rate increases so we don't have to go through this again.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve additional funding for new gen strategies and solutions to complete cost of service study and testimony to PRC for the
Okay, we have a motion for additional funding to New Gen. Do we have a second?
We'll see.
Can we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? We have a, the motion carries. Okay, let's move on to discuss operations for the twenty twenty four season and necessary repairs. I know this is always a debacle.
Yeah, it's always
Do we have a general assessment? What's, I, not going with a big budget plan? What's our bare minimum to do the whole operation?
Right now, the we have twenty thousand dollars budgeted for the pool this year. That doesn't count. That's just pool repairs and operations.
Just to get it up and running.
Yeah, that doesn't count. Employee wages.
No, that's not operation. They're just getting up.
And currently, we need a, we need to replace the pump. And there's also the main drain needs to be repaired. That was something that when the state inspected the pool last year, they identified a repair that needs to be done on the drain and said that wrong. But after last season, when we drained the pool, we need to get it repaired for
Is there a blockage in the main drain?
No, it's, 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 I don't think it's gonna be a hugely expensive repair.
Effective grade?
Yeah, it's just basically, it needs to be repaired around the grade. It's not the drain. There's nothing wrong with the drain itself. It's just like the surface around the drain and it needs a magical word. Yeah, yeah. So I don't think that's gonna be all that expensive. I know last summer, when I was trying to source a pump for it, pump was gonna be at that time around six thousand, seven thousand dollars. If I, if I could have found one then. I had a hard time. Well, I was unable to locate one last year.
And we had somebody look at this for some other pump ideals, maybe running tanums instead of a single or so we can idle it.
Well, the thing about it is, is because of the size of it, in a public pool and all, you know, there's basically just gotta follow the state's rules and regulations.
Will we regenerate the pool three times a day? About three times?
I think it does it more than that. Well, it, it, I believe it recirculates at about every hour and a half, I think. And I think, while it's running.
I don't think you can do that. That's a ninety thousand gallon pool.
Yeah, standard is three, three times a day it's staying. I'm not sure, but I know that that pump and filter, it pumps a hundred and ninety gallons a minute, so
why don't we check to see what the regeneration required is, you know, in size or pump to that? If we have to get tanums are a lot less expensive to run than big single pump. Maybe we can idle the, the tanums idle one at night and then use a second one as needed. Something that's more cost effective.
Well, you know, that's, that's why I'm bringing this up because it's you know, a home pool is not too big of a deal to maintain and upkeep other than the expense. When you start talking about a pool the size of this one here, everything gets more complicated, huh?
We used to maintain Olympic pools. And it didn't seem to be well, it didn't seem to be that big a deal. The state at that time required that we turn over the pool three times.
Yeah, I, I don't know what it is, you know, so.
And the, and the pumps, it seems like we have ongoing pump problems.
We got, we have a new pump. We have a new motors out there. It's the pump that needs to be replaced.
And we don't know, make them all on. Stay right.
But the problem is, we won't be able to open anyway because of no lifeguard.
Well, I was getting to that. You know, we kind of have us, we kind of have a workaround that Mark has been working on. Yeah, but that's sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we talked on that the last meeting.
Yeah, you know, that might be something to think about in the future, but you know, on the upside, since the pool was only opened for like a week last year, we still have a lot of unused supplies that haven't been used, so we've actually got quite a few supplies, so we're not gonna have as much on chemicals and whatnot.
I think we need to do some more investigation on this and find some local pathways personally.
No, I'm just bringing it up because, you know, it's if we're fixing to be in March and it's hard to get anybody to do anything up here if they gotta come from out of town. So, I mean, if we want to start thinking about opening a pool, then we need to start thinking about it now.
I agree. Why don't we, uh, why don't we
Bring this up so everybody's kind of kicking it around.
Well, let's do some investigation. Let me, I will personally do some investigation on pumps and GTMs, what kind of filter we have. I need access to everything. I did a little Well, it's not for approval. It's just something that we want to start thinking about, that we need to get some more information with some cost analysis to go along with it, see what's gonna cost us to operate the pool. A lot of people like the pool. Of course, a lot of people like the golf course too, and I don't know how much that's doing.
Yes, sir.
What's the workaround on the lifeguards? What does that mean?
I had a guy, well, we, we probably, it got brought up at a board meeting back in I think September, maybe October last year about the possibility of filling the deep section of the pool in and making the whole pool where it was five foot instead of four, nine to five to ten. And if it was filled, if it was just only five foot deep pool, we wouldn't need any lifeguard.
Really?
Yeah, and it could be open all the time. Well, not in the winter time, but you know, five days a week or whatever, six, seven days a week.
So it'd be a game pool, technically.
Yeah. Yeah.
A game pool. They consider that a game pool, like they play water polo and
yeah, but it, it wouldn't have to have lifeguard. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to get lifeguard, isn't it?
No, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to have.
No, that's why I say it's always so hard.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's, it, I mean, that surprised me last year that we were actually came up with three lifeguards. I don't know if we can even come up with three lifeguards this year.
No, you can't. Because the classes are held late summer and early fall. Be a lifeguard for the next year. No time. And you might have two available from last year. The little, little Travis, his boy, and Lindsay, the third one, you're not gonna get.
Yeah. So, have we got multiple goals? Have we gotten additional quotes on what it would take to convert the pool whether with one?
No, I've just gotten the one.
Maybe we should check with some other folks to see if somebody could, it's, it's a matter of concrete and plastic.
Pretty much. Well, you know, you'd have to raise the drain, but yeah, that's all. Yeah, it's basically yeah, it's, it doesn't collect requiring work to the filters or anything like that. It would require raising the drain. And we would have to help this on power supply and replacement, yeah, chemicals and all that. But they wanted fifty seven thousand dollars to do that.
But that wasn't the concrete job. We had to
Oh, yeah, well, we would have had to help them do a few things, but you know, like remove the fence so that they could get in there. Now that's
What about the insurance?
Our, our insurance now covers.
Let's do some due diligence on this and see what we can find. Maybe make some inquiries to some other companies that are available. The company that we were discussing with, where, where they got?
El Paso.
Okay. Yeah, that would be the best. Okay, I'll do a little bit of investigation. Okay, moving on. Discuss approve, approve the increase in trash dumpster fees. What are we at now?
Okay, well, I'm gonna put it right out to you. I got figures.
As a what it costs
What it costs, what the invoice amounts for Southwest disposal for the past twelve months totaled one hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. The trash fees we collected in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three were sixty-eight thousand, seventy-one dollars. Uh, we, we received a Otero County Community Service Grant last year for fifteen thousand. That adds up to a shortfall. Uh, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, a monthly shortfall of sixteen hundred and forty-four dollars. As of today, we have five hundred and ninety trash customers. What we basically would need to do then would be to increase, uh, at minimum, uh, our trash rates. Uh, two dollars and seventy-nine cents a month to make up that shortfall. And we were looking into the possibility of another trash company. But it has. Uh, before we can change them, we have to. Put out a, an RFP, or request for that or whatever.
So how much are you thinking, Spanky?
Well, I think we need to raise it at least a couple dollars, at least a dollar or two.
You know, we probably need to do three if we lose on two seventy-nine.
Yeah.
Probably need to go up three dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just.
Well, since COVID, everything's gone up probably thirty, thirty-five percent. I know we hit across the border of everything, diesel fuel, everything, uh. Our property's dropped this year. Miracle.
Is it possible to go to five?
Well, I would like to say something about.
Well, I don't think we need to necessarily be making a profit off of it. But I do think that we need to at least cover the cost.
And then, okay, and then we need to think, I do not feel that our trash is adequate. We are barely at the minimum, meeting the residents' needs with that. We have, and that's, yeah, thank you, we have talked about that for years, about expanding. Um, I know we have some area over there, maybe have a third dumpster, maybe have a little stick, there's all kinds of things we can do. But if you guys, if you listen to what Spanky said about the, um. Cost of, of goods, we were forty-one, forty-two percent short. We have been running short of money for years on everything. And that's why we really don't get a lot accomplished. So I, in my opinion, so I'm thinking, instead of just covering the trash bill, maybe we can. Well, we should do something to improve the trash, give some more funds in so that we can meet the residents' needs. Take care of that and, um. I, I, I don't think the people are really gonna complain if they're dealing with five, eight dollars a month for the trash. Because we, we've outgrown it, and I know some people say, oh, ten years ago, it wasn't like this. I've been here fifteen years, and there has been times I take my trash home because there's, you know, not enough money. So, I don't wanna say make a profit, but let's do it so that we don't have to do it again next year if something goes up. So that maybe we can do something like a couple of times a year, have a dumpster setting out. So people can come bring their chemicals, their tires, things that you can't throw in the dumpster. We, we, we can accommodate our residents much better on the trash.
It, it actually would be, it actually would be kinda nice too, if people would dump a whole house full of. Uh, furniture in there as one time.
There was so many trucks going up and down my road this weekend, I know that, I was scared to work in the dumpster.
Well, not too many years ago, we only had one dumpster.
Exactly.
Now we have two, and I think it's been very rare that I've been down there that they both have four. And we had talked about trash compactor maybe for, we figured that. Wouldn't cover the cost, it wouldn't help, I don't see how it would not help. To have a compacting type dumpster. Some capacity. Maybe we can get a hand-train version.
Yeah, you guys with the woods broken, the inches down, there's still that tree that's laying.
Yeah, well, we do need some modernization.
Well, just, just to clean up and make it more functional. You know, make it so that.
Well, you know, our holidays is when we have our huge trash.
Yeah, and, and I am. Few months back, I, I cut it down to two pickups a week. I'm gonna be pumping it back up to three or something, pretty soon.
Very soon. I really both believe so.
That's why I would have no fault with at least three dollars. Plus, we have to send our guys all over there all the time to clean up anyway.
And that's.
I mean, there's conditional expenses besides, um, these payments and dumping.
Yeah, and that's, those numbers that I just quoted, those don't include. The time it takes our guys go over there and smash that trash down every day. Or pick up after it.
Well, I know the pushback we're gonna get, we have people that come up here twenty days a year to clean trash bills. They're saying, we're not using the dumpster. And we have multiple. Trash payments by, well, I pay three trash bills, two of the houses weren't even occupied. So. I think we need to strike a happy medium here.
Yeah, we probably have, I'm sure. Especially in the summertime. You know, well, there's a lot of people up here that are camping or whatever, or visiting, so it all.
On the holidays, after Fourth of July, after Memorial Day, I go down there and that dumpster's totally filled with beer bottles, wine bottles. And stuff from the bar, are, are they paying the standard rate when they do that?
No, that would pay.
That was you. I mean, we've got some really heavy users, are they paying their fair share? Do we have a commercial trash rate?
Well, we have one trash rate.
Well, do we need to consider a commercial trash rate? I mean, we have people that are overusing the dumpster, not paying their fair share, that needs to be addressed.
What's overusing?
Well, when I go down there on Fourth of July, after, on Monday morning, and the thing is. Top to bottom, filled with beer cases and wine bottles and everything, or I would say that was over. And I mean, it's not all a year, but typically holidays.
Well, that's what the trash cans are doing. Is to put the trash in.
Well, I realize that, but I don't go down there and throw twenty-five bottles, uh, cases of beer bottles in there, a hundred wine bottles. I don't think either residents do. Except for, except for.
No, it's, it's up to you, I mean, I gave you all the numbers, you know, right now we're almost three dollars and. We're almost, right now we're at. We need to go up about three dollars just to break even.
I say go four, and that's a happy week. That gives us a little bit extra for people compacting and cleaning and all that kind of stuff.
I, this year, this year I did request from Otero County. I mean, a community service grant, uh, twenty thousand dollars instead of fifteen. Doesn't mean we're gonna get twenty thousand, because I requested more last year and they gave us fifteen.
So if we go to.
So they, I don't think they really care what I ask them, they're gonna give us fifteen.
If we go to four dollars, uh, per customer, that brings us up to. Twenty, twenty-three hundred dollars a month additional. That we're over and above what we're getting right now. At five hundred and ninety customers.
Yeah, we're, we have a.
Oh, just under twenty-four hundred dollars to get our funding.
No, we're having about a sixteen hundred and fifty dollar shortfall right now.
So that brings us up, that puts us over.
Yeah.
So.
You know, and we can't, we, we can't be using water, water billings to pay for this trash, so right now it's coming out of. FNS. When we have a shortfall.
Does anybody have anything to say about the four dollars a month? Yes, sir.
I got a question. Is the four dollars a month, I don't have a problem with. The four dollars a month, they're gonna cover the wages and the people you send up there to clean up or to bash it?
That gives us about another. That gives us about eight hundred dollars a month for additional payment of employees.
It, it, it takes them, Clark. Uh, you know, they. No.
And Spanky.
They're, they're spending probably, they pretty much, it, it, it's pretty much routine for them to go up there and smash it down just about every day or every other day. And they'll go up on the weekend and smash it down. And right now, I, I usually, I've been having a guy, one of the guys. On call on the weekends, so they're, they're getting paid at least two hours a day on the weekends. But they're mainly doing it to go out and check the plant and everything, so. You know, to have to like run the backhoe up there and smash it down, so. No, four dollars an hour is not gonna, not covering that.
So you're saying that an, an extra eight hundred dollars a month for the water?
No.
Labor costs?
That's why, you just got being saying a while ago, you don't wanna come back and revisit this again. You may wanna go and pour it off.
And then you just mentioned, Spanky, that we don't use the water money for the trash. How are we gonna get the wood to replace that dangerous wood that's up there? How are we gonna get money to replace the fence that, well, doesn't hold anything? How are we gonna get money to reuse that broken branch?
That, that, that actually. Is the trash money going into FNS when it comes in?
Goes to the.
General fund. So.
You know, if, 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 you know, the trash should be funded exactly, you know, exactly the same as the water. You know, you have your water billing that funds your, your water operations, you have the trash billing. Your trash billing should be funding. Uh, your trash, your trash expenses. You know, and these, these numbers I gave you, those are just what we're paying to haul it up. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't include doing any kind of improvements around. The, the trash site, which we actually really need to do because, uh. Right now, it's not, that whole site is not in compliance with the state. It needs to be, it's something that, you know, I'm working on, trying to get us some grant money to actually. Set it up to where it would be like a transfer station. But you know, right now, with it not being in compliance, I really don't wanna rock the boat with the state. I mean, I've got enough issues with getting a district in compliance with everything else, I don't really wanna. I really don't wanna add nothing else to. Give the state anything else to be jumping my ass about.
Okay, certainly will. Let me recap the numbers, about eighty-five hundred dollars a month for haul, is that correct?
No. No, it's around.
You said one oh two for the year.
Yeah, but some months it's less.
Uh, well, one oh two by.
In the summer, in the summer, in the summertime, it's about eleven thousand a month.
But the one oh two covers the fiscal year.
That's, yeah.
So that comes out to eighty-five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
And what are we billing our customers for right now for a month?
Um.
Eleven.
Yeah.
And we've got roughly six hundred customers.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's sixty-six hundred dollars. So we have a shortfall right there of about two thousand dollars. So if we add, if we take this up to five, nine, six, that's three thousand, that gives us three thousand dollars additional money at five dollars a customer. So that would bring that sixty-six hundred up to ninety-six hundred. On a month, on an eighty-five hundred dollar average, so we would be able to buy about eleven hundred dollars. Just quick numbers.
Comes closer to paying those guys.
Well, it's, and then, you know, there, we do need to do some work over. It's out of doubt.
Well, if that's a water billing, is that gonna be the responsibility of the water or FNS?
No, it's, it's the track, the water billing and trash billing are totally separate.
Well, I realize that, but since we're taking trash under a trash billing, uh, we should have that. Any modern, modernization or improvement.
I could, I could.
Yeah, should, should come out of that trash.
Yeah, like I said, we're, we're investigating some grants. Uh, there's some grants out there. That is, you know, some solid waste grants that are possible, but, you know, that would be funding that. We wouldn't, even if we were to apply and we were to receive a grant. It's not any kind of funds that we're gonna get this year, be next year down the road, so. It's not that kind of money as far as doing any kind of improvements to the place.
Okay, our metered water, we have people that get metered water down here on a weekly basis, correct? That are off-grid, living off-grid here?
We have one, two right now.
One, two, okay. So, that's not a, that's not a big concern, because they don't pay a trash bill, they pay for water, but undoubtedly they're using it. They do pay trash bills, okay, yeah, okay.
Spanky?
Yes, sir.
What would you have to do to make it be compliant? Just curious.
Uh, it, it really needs to be set up like a, like a transfer station. It would have to be enclosed in a FIS and, and all that, it would have to be, uh. Totally redone to where it meets the Mexico State regulations. It doesn't even come close to that.
So what, at a transfer station, wouldn't you have to have an intent?
No, I think you just have to have somebody open and close it.
And that might help tremendously if we had it open. Under standard operation hours, well, instead of twenty-four hours a day, because I see people, when they clean out houses here on Sunday. That thing just gets over full, like I said, old furniture, old junk. On primarily Saturdays and Sundays, if we had a, I would design with a five-day-a-week operation of the. Of the, uh, of the dumpsters in the enclosed area.
Yeah, I mean, it's. You know, there, there's pros and cons to locking that place up, you know?
Well, I know people are gonna dump trash outside the gate.
They can, you know, I know down there in Eddie County. You know, around Artesia, Carlsbad, they have transfer stations out. Out, out, outlying areas, that's what they do, they lock them up on the weekends, you go out there every morning to crack them. People just pile up on the outside. It's what they do.
Okay, well, let's have a motion to an increase of, uh. Of the dumpster bill, and we talked about three, four, and five dollars. As far as, uh, increasing the water bills, I don't think any one of those are gonna kill anybody. So, we need a motion to.
Five million for five dollars.
I'd, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to increase. The trash dumpster fees by five dollars per customer per month. Do we have a second?
I second you.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm, I'm, I'm no one.
Okay.
I, I don't think that's enough, I, I think we're setting ourselves up for.
Okay, we have three ayes, one no. Motion passes. Uh, Carrie voted no. The rest of the directors voted yes. So we will move it to five dollars a month. Okay, what's the total? Ninety-six hundred dollars.
What would it be now?
It's about sixty.
It'll go to sixteen a month. Times six hundred. To tell my wife. Ninety, ninety-six hundred dollars, ninety-six hundred dollars a month. We have five ninety, five hundred and ninety customers at sixteen dollars, five, ninety-six hundred dollars a month. And our trash bill is roughly eighty-five hundred. So it gives us eleven hundred dollars a month. Uh, not surplus, but to be upkeep and maintenance of the trash. Yes, ma'am.
Right now, trash fees only come out of water accounts, what about adding trash fees to standby?
I don't think that's, for me personally, I would say absolutely not, because they're not here using any of the trash on standbys. That's why I asked about people living off-grid that had. That's why I asked about people living off-grid that had. Use of the dumpsters without paying.
That's, that's partly. That's partly the reason behind that community service grant, Otero County, is to help offset the costs. For our trash.
Well, we have campers up here, every weekend in the summer, they're all with travel papers, that's what they do with the trash when they leave town.
Oh, yeah.
They dump it. So no, we might have a hundred or two hundred campers up there on any given weekend. So we're, and there's, like I said, we're being subsidized for that. So I don't think any add-on to the standby fees would be justified. That's my personal. Any more questions? Okay, approved, disapproved, twenty standby leans in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twelve cents. I think this is a no-brainer. We need a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that be approved, twenty standby leans in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries to proceed on standby. Public question and answer session, do we have any questions from the publics that need to be addressed?
I have questions. Okay, we had a board member earlier that was going to, um, get our ponds full for fire season. And what I understand, our ponds are still empty, so are they full? Yes, okay, the ponds are full.
Pretty, pretty close to it.
Does it take like more than a day to still?
No, it, it, it depends, you know. No, I was actually down there at Well Two on, on Thursday, Thursday, there's, it's one of the bigger ponds. And it's full. You know, I did, I did.
Spring water, Well Two.
Or combination, spring, spring water, okay. Uh, and I, I didn't look at the other ponds, but I, I was actually talking to Joe about it when we were down there. He said, no, they're all, they're all pretty close enough. Good.
Gosh, well, thank you, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, my next concern is, um, have we got anywhere on the water truck?
It's well done on it, it runs.
Does that hold water? What, what do we need to do to start getting the water truck function? What was the first thing?
No, what, for what purpose?
Well, it's supposed to actually, you know, like if we're, you have an outage or whatever.
With a, with a temporary.
Where it would be not possible.
Or if it's really.
That's, that's the actual purpose behind that truck.
Who's working on the truck? Oh, okay. Maybe we need to have.
That would take a lot, make that truck, um, from potable water.
No, I wasn't, you, you couldn't actually make it from potable water.
They're just saying for keeping the dust down on roads and, and temporary emergency water. So maybe we need to have somebody qualified to look at it like. There.
Well, I'm just.
Oh, he's looked at it already.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think.
That's why I know exactly what job I'm on.
Since we're a water department, it would be nice to have a functional water truck. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. I, I know.
Alagoro and Otero County don't have it.
I think it's way down the list compared to other things that need done.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
But we are gonna work on that, right?
Uh, it's way down the list. I, I know. It's, as far as I'm concerned, if anybody else wants to take up the gauntlet, I think there's a lot of other things that need attention before that.
It, 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 it really only, it, it's welling. Pipe that comes out of, on the bottom of the tank, it cuts right out of the bottom of the tank. That for sure needs.
Probably needs plated in.
Well, whatever, but that, you know, once you fix that, then you can tell where the other leaks are, but you need to fix that first because you can't tell where else it's leaking. Because it dumps out pretty much. It, it'll, you can fill that up and it'll drain that tank in a couple of hours.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Maybe we can look at it and see what it takes to get it repaired. I think I'm the only, only going certified person in town that have the capabilities besides Paul. Paul's not here. I'll take a look at it, see what. Director's remarks, do we have any director's remarks? Thanks, everybody. The only, the only remarks I would make at the very end is we need to find out who's on our bank accounts, is signers on our bank account, we need to. Clean up all that, if we have signers on the bank account, shouldn't be there, they need to be removed.
They, they have been, they actually.
Then we need to put Ed on, that's treasure, so all that's been done. It's all been cleaned up as far as having old names and signatures on there for past years. That was, that's my.
Done right away. Okay. But we do need additional. It, it should have every board member, every board member should be authorized to side check. Because there's times. When Terry's unavailable. I mean, I'm here. Every day, but here, here soon, I'm not gonna be here every day, you know?
You know, they, did you sign your paperwork down at the bank?
So does, does Ed need to get to the bank and get on a signature card?
Dave. Dave.
Yes.
Have, have you gone to the bank?
I have not.
Okay.
Well, I need the bank rotations, account numbers, all that kind of stuff so we can get that accomplished.
First national.
Yeah, and your paperwork was already submitted down there, the bank was just waiting for you to go in and sign the paperwork.
Maybe we can get that done this week?
Sure.
Okay.
Could do. Cloud crawl, can't you?
That's where you need to go.
Yeah, cloud crawl.
And I already submitted the paperwork though, but I did that months ago, so you may have.
If they don't have less crumbling, yeah.
Yeah, and, and go ahead and just talk to Kyle, the bank manager, I'm familiar with him. Nice, nice, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's resolved.
Did Paul ever get on the signature card?
Paul, are you on the signature card?
I believe it was only for like nine deposit, I think.
Okay, we'll check on that when we're in there.
Okay, because his paperwork was also sent to the.
And we probably need a letter stating that we're, uh, that he is treasurer and that I am a director from the office. Probably, we need a letter.
Comes out on the form.
So we can, uh, a presentation letter, I know I have to do that, that accounts for daily.
Kyle has a form and he'll send that to us.
Okay. Kyle will send out the form, okay.
When you ask him for it, so, you know, somebody can do that.
Okay, very good. If there's nothing else, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank everyone for coming.
And there, there's some new people here in the audience that started recording the meetings and there's.
And that's no easy task to get that loaded, because I've been trying to. It takes some work to get a load of it.
People from out of town wanted to watch the meetings, now they can watch them almost live.
Almost.
It's a good thing.